All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tempe City Council, regular city council meeting. Apologies for a little bit of a late start. We're having some technical difficulties that we're trying to get worked out. Members of the public who attend the meeting physically are asked to maintain distance between other parties, and masks are optional for all attendees per a City of Tempe policy. Alternatively, members of the public may attend the meeting virtually through Cisco WebEx events by visiting tempe.gov/councilmeetinginfo for more information. Council meetings can also be watched in real time via Cox Cable Channel 11 and at tempe.gov/tempe11. I'd now like to invite everyone who's able and willing to stand to join me in a moment of silence followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Next up is item number four, Meeting Minutes. Tonight, I'll be assisted by Councilmember Keating. Councilmember Keating?
Thank you, Mayor. I move we approve items 4B, 1 through 10.
Okay. It's been moved that we... By Councilmember Keating, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Garland. Please vote.
Aye.
And is Councilmember Hodge still not here? Okay. Then that vote passes six to zero with Councilmember Hodge absent. Next up is item five, Reports and Announcements. I have a few. I was going to ask to... Madam Clerk, do you want me to do these down here or should I stay up here?
Wherever you're comfortable, Mayor.
All right, Zee. Just kicking it right back to me. I see. So, all right. Okay, then I will start... I will go down for these next couple here. So, the first proclamation I have is for Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month. I just, I think, a lot of you who know me for a long time know how personal this one is to me. June 4th, 2012, 10 years ago, was when my mother passed from ovarian cancer. I still remember the council meeting I was sitting in, in an executive session at the time, where my dad sent me an email that had three words in the subject matter that said, "Mom has cancer." And I remember sitting there in the meeting, not knowing what to do at that point. Should I leave the meeting? Should I stay and finish the meeting? I reached out to my father by email, and he said, "Stay and finish the meeting. That's what your mom would want you to do," which is exactly what I did. You know, she unfortunately passed about 10 and a half years ago now. So ovarian cancer is something that's very deeply personal to me, and I know to a lot of people in this audience and a lot of people here in the city of Tempe. So I wanted to make sure that I read a proclamation. Whereas ovarian cancer is one of the most common forms of cancer among women and causes more deaths than any other type of female reproductive cancer. And whereas Arizona has the sixth highest incidence and mortality rates of ovarian cancer in the southwest, with over 70% of its cases being diagnosed at a late stage. And whereas there is no test or screening exam that can detect ovarian cancer in its early stages. And whereas the city of Tempe recognizes the need to raise awareness of the disease and its impact on Arizonas. We encourage all residents to learn more about the subtle signs, symptoms, and current treatment options available to women to identify and overcome this disease. And whereas the city of Tempe will be participating in the National Ovarian Cancer Coalition, Arizona statewide event, Light Up for Ovarian Cancer, to promote awareness about the disease that whispers, honor survivors, and remember lives. Now therefore, I, Cory D. Woods, Mayor of the City of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare September 2022 as Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month in Tempe, Arizona. I'd like to, I have someone I'd like to invite up to come stand with me while I present this. Can you do a quick introduction for everyone?
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Rachel Cutman. I am a one-year ovarian cancer survivor, as well as actually a breast cancer survivor. So it's just super important that we get the awareness out there for this disease that whispers, just like the mayor said. Symptoms can be really vague, so it's just important that we create awareness about this important initiative, and we really appreciate your support.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
The next one, I had the honor of actually wearing these very interesting socks today. In honor, I wear very interesting socks on most days here. I'm sure that someone watching at home didn't hear my intro at all, but they're like, "Why is he pulling up his socks?" But these socks were given to me to promote childhood cancer awareness, so I wanted to make sure that I wore these tonight in honor. And this proclamation says, "Whereas childhood cancer is the number-one killer of children in the nation and is one of the most overlooked and underfunded areas of all cancer research. And whereas Children's Cancer Network is an East Valley nonprofit dedicated to inspiring hope and healing for thousands of families in Arizona. And whereas CCN is a constant source of support, filling in the gaps where hospitals and insurance companies leave off, lending financial assistance to families in need, offering superhero and sibling therapy through dedicated counselors at Phoenix Children's Hospital, and promoting healthy lifestyles through physical and confidence-building programs. And whereas CCN is a tireless advocate of its tight-knit community of survivors, helping them be strong, smile often, and dream big, from their initial diagnosis through treatment and beyond. And whereas the city of Tempe recognizes the need to raise awareness for childhood cancer and shine a light on the nation's 600,000 young cancer survivors and the more than 1,900 children diagnosed with cancer in the United States each year. Now therefore, I, Cory Woods, Mayor of the City of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare September 2022 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month in Tempe, Arizona." And of course, Councilmember Garland getting the socks before I had a chance to roll my pant leg back down. Next up is item 5A3, City of Tempe Veterans Commission Appointment. Just want to congratulate Aaron McBride on his appointment to the Veterans Commission as outlined in item 7A1 on the agenda. Next up, item 5B, City Managers' Reports and Announcements. Mrs. City Manager, I believe you have a couple this evening.
I do. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. First up, we're going to have a presentation from Engineering and Transportation regarding survey performance goals and the public monument system. Staff is coming up to make that presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Julian Dreesang, Deputy Engineering and Transportation Director, City Engineer. And tonight, I am joined by Troy Wayora, who is our Business Systems Supervisor, and part of his duties is to oversee our survey group. We have a licensed land surveyor, Glenn. Unfortunately, he's not able to join us today, but Troy will be giving the presentation about something that often we don't think about a lot, our survey monument system in the city, but something that is really important for anybody that's a property owner, a business owner, deals with any kind of right-of-way issues. And so Troy is just going to give a very brief presentation tonight about our survey monument program.
I dig those socks. So, good evening. My name is Troy Wayora, and I am the GIS and Survey Supervisor for the City of Tempe Engineering and Transportation Department. Thank you, Mayor and council, and city staff and residents for allowing me to take a few minutes to talk about the city survey staff, the public monument system, and the survey staff's performance goals. Clicky, clicky. There we go. In November 2019, the survey team identified the need to locate and survey as many quarter-section monuments in the city as possible. In an internal staff-initiated performance goal, the survey team identified the need to resurvey 100% of the quarter-section monuments in Tempe. By surveying these monuments, the team could verify the geographic data long associated with them was correct and use those new measurements to move forward on a second goal of modernizing the city's projection system. The city of Tempe has 181 quarter-sections defined by 232 quarter-corner monuments. Most often, they're found in the center of major intersections. The survey performance goals involve locating and taking duplicate measurements of each monument. As of February 2022, all locatable quarter-corners have been measured, with approximately 70% having their second measurement. They're shown in green on this map. The yellow ones have had their first occupation but still require a second. The 18 red marks are monuments that are lost, destroyed, or otherwise unoccupiable. While the performance measure is important, there are also over 10,000 separate intersection monuments, which is what I passed out to you, that the survey department is also charged with protecting. There are three primary goals identified in their program. The first goal is to revisit all the possible quarter-corner monuments with modern GPS survey equipment and verify the latitude, longitude, and elevation of the points. Survey staff will then use that information to update the Monument Data Report, or MDR, which is shown on the screen, with modern measurements and pictures. This data will be pooled with an ArcGIS Online map that is accessible by the staff and the public, including surveyors, engineers, developers, drafters, or anyone who's interested to get the most up-to-date information possible. Finally, that data will be used to convert the city's custom low-distortion projection based on a 1927 standard to a new, modern projection system shared with other municipalities named State Plane Coordinate System 2025 or SPCS 2025. So, why are the survey monuments important? Survey monuments are used to maintain the integrity and continuity of adjoining properties, neighborhoods, subdivisions, roads, highways, cities, counties, and even countries. The land surveying community has observed an increase in the destruction of control monuments for right-of-way and public and private property boundaries. With each destruction, the potential for conflicts and uncertainty of boundaries arises. After all, the control monument network is the basis for all plats, easements, land divisions, water, sewer, and storm utility plans, and any other design work that relies on correct location to tie into or interact with anything else already constructed. And, so what do these survey monuments look like? There are many different types of monuments and survey markers in Tempe. They signify many different things. You'll find brass caps, which are examples of something I gave you, PK nails, cotton picker spindle, that's the silver thing I passed out, rebar, metal posts, and other markers usually on the ground, in sidewalks, in pavement, sometimes in handholds, in walls, dirt, carved into stones, and in many other places. In the city of Tempe, both in the right-of-way and in public or private property, these markers signify some type of land right, and it's our duty to preserve them. It does happen occasionally that monuments will be lost, destroyed, either covered by pavement, lost under dirt, destroyed by construction, or just grown over by brush. When that happens, city survey staff must find the monument by measuring from the nearest known or found monuments. This usually involves running a measuring tape, often through traffic, for hundreds of feet, from the known monuments to the expected location, marking the expected location and searching for the monument. This can either be through jackhammering up the pavement, digging through the dirt, or chopping down vegetation. Now, it's difficult to see in this picture, but the lime-green rod is resting on a survey monument that was inches away from this excavation and destruction. City survey staff were notified and were able to save the location of the monument before the excavation destroyed it. It's occasionally unavoidable that a monument is destroyed, but if the location is surveyed prior to destruction, the monument can be reset in its correct location. Normally, this is within a quarter of an inch of the previous location. It's this tight tolerance that allows us to maintain a rigid control network that is the basis of the city survey team's performance goals. So, once this project is complete, the survey data will be used to move the city from a custom low-distortion projection, or LDP, based off of that standard nearly 100 years old, to SPCS 2025, a modern low-distortion projection shared with other municipalities in our area. This is going to make data sharing more easy and open. By publishing this data to a central ArcGIS web map, we can make the data available as it is updated instead of weeks to months to years later. And thank you all for your time. I'm open to any questions you may have.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Really appreciate it. Any members of council have any comments or questions? Councilmember Garland?
I just have to say, I'm absolutely impressed with what you guys are able to do. I did not realize that there were so many markers that we had and how incredible it is that you've been able to find them. My husband's from Minnesota, and where he grew up outside of Columbia, outside of the Twin Cities, all the streets are all different directions, and the grid is actually looking very nice. It must make it a little bit easier for you to do. But my question is, when you were looking for these points and you marked them, did you find with the new technology that they, things were off at all? Or how did you do?
You know, strangely enough, the old-time surveyors did a really good job, given the technology they had at the time, and things are almost always where they say they're going to be. It's been pretty impressive. That's not to say everything is there. You're dealing with 10,000 monuments. You're going to have some that are off, but the vast majority of them are right where they say they're supposed to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Anyone else? Comments or questions? Anyone on the phone? All right, hearing none. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. Thank you for the presentation. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Our next presentation concerns the six consecutive, unprecedented six consecutive international accreditation for our City of Tempe Fire Medical Rescue Department. We were one of the beta cities in 1997. Our former chief, Cliff Jones, who's also the 2022 recipient of the Don Carlos Humanitarian of the Year Award, started us on this path, and these accreditations come up every five years, and in every five-year increment since then, we have been internationally accredited. This is a big deal, and it's a much bigger deal to me now that I had the honor of being able to join our accreditation team as we presented to the full International Accreditation Board last month in Denver, Colorado. That consists of Chief Greg Reese, who's here, Assistant Chief Andrew Glass, who's also here, the president of our local 493, Don Youngward, Data Dan, Dan Petty was with us as well, and myself. And we, again, not to brag too much, but what the heck, we're all friends here. I'll just say that we went in a pod of three different cities, each of whom had been previously accredited, and the number of questions that we had total, I want to say, was six, our follow-ups, and theirs were, I'll just say, quite a bit more. The point being is that the only real comment of any substance we got from the committee that morning was, "We would love to see you do more patient advocacy services," because that's a really forward-thinking and progressive program that you've done, and kudos all around. Even the most kind of reputationally scrupulous and questioning members of that board were duly impressed by the work that was done to prove up why we should be accredited once again. I have to give a tremendous amount of credit to Assistant Chief Andrew Glass, who headed up the accreditation team, and all the many people within Tempe Fire Medical Rescue and all the other supporting departments who lent a lot of time and effort. The site visit that happened earlier this year went incredibly well, to the point where the site visit leader was saying that he was literally searching for things to say, for follow-up, and that's just an incredible testimony to the type of work that we do in Tempe Fire Medical Rescue. It's an outstanding department. We know that. Our residents know that, but now we have, for the sixth consecutive time, the international accreditation body affirming that for an unprecedented, like I said, six times. So, great kudos to all involved. Chief Reese has brought the accreditation plaque with him, and this is an opportunity for a photo opportunity with council. Chief, Chief Reese, if you want to say a few words or anything to add?
Not really.
Okay. All right. Good enough.
Yeah, wing it, thanks. I'll keep it short. You know what? I did get to speak at the hearing, and I'll say this. It is extremely, I'm extremely proud of what we accomplished and our ability to continue to do this, and we couldn't do it without the support of city management, the other departments. They play a significant role, you know, when they come to evaluate us, and through the five years that it takes, you know, the work to stay up and be worthy of going before that commission and only having six recommendations. I said at that hearing that I started out in this department, when Chief Jones brought it to the department, I've only known a department that has been accredited. I made that commitment to stay accredited. In my time in this role, we've been reaccredited three times. It's been an honor to represent not only this city, but really the membership who, day in and day out, they do the heavy lifting. And though I won't be in this position to receive this recognition again, I will tell you this, we'll be committed, and we're going to do it again in five years. So, thank you all very much, and I couldn't be prouder of what we've accomplished.
Thank you so much, Chief. Congratulations. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of other announcements. First, congratulations are in order for Craig Hayton. Craig was just appointed as the Director of our Community Services Department. And we want to recognize him. Craig stepped in in the interim role after the promotion of Keith Burke to Deputy City Manager, and he's done a great job, and we look forward to continuing to work with him in this capacity. So, thank you. Second thing, I previewed this at Work-Study Session a couple of weeks back, but the closer we get to the date, the more real it gets, and it bears second repeating, and that is the impending retirement of our good friend and colleague, Mr. Mark Wittenberg. After 30 years of service, just this week, at our monthly breakfast honoring... Pretty good stuff. This is a very compelling slide, you know? They always say, "Make visuals that people will remember," and I don't think any of you will forget this. I just hope it doesn't haunt your dreams. I've had the pleasure of knowing Mark, not his entire 30-year career, but a pretty good chunk of it, and, you know, he sent out just a wonderful note to his staff as he leaves the position as the IT Director for the City of Tempe, noting quite a few highlights of his 30 years of service in that department, including, at the time he started, that there was no internet, no email, and no cellular phones. And that's kind of amazing to think that since 1992, that we've come that far in technology. And it gives you a really good idea as to the kind of agile leadership you need in IT to keep up with the continuing sort of dizzying pace of technology. And that doesn't happen by accident, it happens because great leaders like Mark Wittenberg step up and help us to navigate through all of that. And, you know, there's people who do their job and do it well, and there are people who have a true passion for it, and you can feel it and see it. And, you know, Mark exudes that passion and has every single day that he's worked here. He truly likes, you know, computers. He's the guy who isn't afraid to get his hands dirty and to really kind of continue to advance us in our technology needs here. And, you know, we certainly wish him all the best in what I know will be a brief retirement, because although he is leaving us, he and the city of Raleigh, North Carolina, is going to be very, very fortunate. He is moving across country and will be joining them in a very similar capacity that he's had here at the city of Tempe. So our loss will ultimately be Raleigh's gain, but we are very, very sorry to see him go. But we're also wishing him nothing but the best in his future endeavors, and that's what I wanted to say. Again, it certainly bears second repeating, and thank you so much, Mark, for your storied 30-year career. That's all I have now. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much, Mr. City Manager. Appreciate it. Next up is item number six, Public Appearances. According to the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the city council may only discuss matters listed elsewhere on this agenda for discussion and legal action. The purpose of the open call to the public is to allow individuals to address the city council on any issue within the jurisdiction of the city council. Appearances shall be limited to an aggregate total of 60 minutes. No person shall speak more than once, and there is a limit of three minutes per speaker. Speakers present at the podium must state their name and city of residence and provide a speaker card. Members of the public shall refrain from making personal, impertinent, or slanderous remarks, and from becoming boisterous while addressing the city council or while attending the meeting. Speakers will be taken first come, first served, in the order in which the cards are received. Speakers choosing to not appear in person or virtually may provide their written comments to council prior to the meeting for their review. Speakers' visual aids and appearances by phone or recordings are not allowed. Council members are prohibited by state law from taking action on, commenting, or discussing a matter raised by a member of the public, even if asked to do so by a member of the public, so long as the subject discussed by the speaker is not listed as a specific item for council's consideration for discussion and legal action. At the conclusion of public appearances, the council may ask the city manager to review a matter or place a matter on a future agenda. Now, I'm going to go into my cards here. The first card I believe I have here is from Mario Martinez. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have up to three minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Mario Martinez, and I live in Tempe. As a taxpaying citizen, I am here to condemn the impotent lack of leadership that Cory Woods displayed in the city council budget meeting held around June 23rd. No criticism of any other council member is intended or implied. At the subject meeting, there was a public hearing on the property tax levy. I attempted to speak the standard three minutes on the issue. A local newspaper reported my comments as, quote, "At least one resident came forward during the meeting to endorse the property tax increase so that residents could get more say in city services, particularly near the lake," end quote. On this rancorous night, because of the public protests about the tragic Tempe Lake drowning, some meeting participants were understandably angry and used profanity. This was clearly against the rules, but Cory and the city attorney did not equitably enforce the rules. Even though I complied with all the council rules and did not use profanity, I was the only one that the city attorney repeatedly interrupted. I will not tolerate this discriminatory conduct. Using some bizarre rationale, the city attorney evidently did not see the connection between taxes and the government services that are funded by our taxes. Incidentally, between the city attorney and Cory's taxpayer subsidized salaries, they're knocking down about $250,000 a year. To underscore the discriminatory treatment I received right after I spoke, former council member Kubey talked about the lake incident in far greater detail, far longer time than I did, and the city attorney did not interrupt Ms. Kubey once. Cory, you oversee the city attorney, and you are responsible for making sure that the residents have the right to speak at public hearings. The buck stops with you, not your advisors. This incident is not only a disgrace to our city, but our rights as American citizens. I demand a public apology from you as mayor. Cory, you're always publicly showboating about your heroic commitment to leadership, accountability, transparency, and engagement, but respectfully, your professional cowardice displayed at the subject meeting was the exact opposite. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez. All right, next public speaker is Lila Joanne Baginsky. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have up to three minutes to address the council.
My name is Lila Baginsky. I go by Joanie, and I represent the American Legion Post 138 in Tempe, and I live in Mesa, Arizona, right now. So, we started the post by typing in triplicate paperwork, and we had to have 35 new members to start the post, and it took a while. And it took a while. We got our charter in 2010, but we didn't receive it until the beginning of 2011. So, it's still been there quite a long time. It's not going to be there very much longer, which is the reason that we're here. I had the job of starting the paperwork and going through, I looked up Arizona's Iraq killed in action. And after about a week, it was a tough job, I came across a young man, James Wackowski. His father is here. And I wasn't sure if I had the right person, so I needed to get ahold of family that, we wanted to name the post after their son. They were out of town. We eventually got back together, and I explained what I wanted on the phone by, it was hard because I was trying to find out if they were the parents of this deceased soldier, and chose my words rather carefully. We got the okay from his parents, lovely, lovely people. That was a hard thing to do, was to try to leave a message about that. But since that time, we've been here in Tempe since 2011, and to me, it's home. We make veterans feel welcome, no matter what war era, and passionate about veterans, all of us. But we are going to have to move, and we would like suggestions on where, you know, or if you all can help in any way. I realize you can't answer me right now, but the commander has something to say also.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. The next speaker is John Boyle. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Thank you, council members. I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you. I am John Boyle. I am a member of, I live in Tempe. I am a business owner in Tempe, and I love Tempe. Let's just go with that. What Joanie just spoke about, be that person. Be the person that you have to make that phone call to. Hi, I'm Joanie Baginsky, and I want to start an American Legion. I understand, I've heard your son's story. Would it be okay? Ouch. Right? Here we are. We have been in Tempe for many years, and now we have to move. And it's that simple. Our building got sold, and here we are. Why do I do what I do? I have a 60-hour, like all of you, I have a 60-hour-a-week job, and here I am volunteering, standing before you. I spent 11 years in the United States Air Force, and it's about veterans. It's about when someone walks in and goes, "Hi, I need help." And you go, "How can I help?" He says, "Can I just wash my clothes? Can I just shower?" And you say, "Yes." I want to stay in Tempe to offer that service. It's really that simple. It's not complicated. It's not a, it's that simple. Many of my members are here tonight. I am privileged to be their commander. We nominate and we vote members in that sometimes feel like we don't deserve it. I've never asked for a service that I haven't needed myself. If you see the purple shirts behind me, there's a reason for that. Those purple shirts represent 22 veterans a day that are no longer with us for one reason or another. I was almost one of those. So, I reach out and I touch those that I can. I am not perfect. I am not who we are. We just do what we can. There will be, we have reached out to the Veterans Commission, we will continue to reach out, we want to stay in Tempe. I believe there's a service and a need for us to do so. We have an opportunity unlike any others. In 10 seconds or less, I will say this. You don't always get an opportunity to create something really, really good. Be the one is the American Legion Initiative this year. Be the one. I will, I hope that you will help me be the one that creates a place and a space for veterans in Tempe. Thanks very much.
Thank you so much, sir. Appreciate it. Yes, Councilor Dvorak?
Yeah, if it's possible, I know that maybe staff has reached out, but if staff can please work with the veterans here, and just seeing about opportunities, I'll let the City Manager for that can be directed, and I just want to say I appreciate their services.
Thank you, Councilor Dvorak. Next speaker I have is Zach Munsey. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes to address the council.
Mayor Woods, City Council. My name is Zach Munsey. I live in Awatuki, but I will say I reside in Tempe because everything that I do for these veterans, these brothers and sisters here, is here. It is my home. Joanie and John did a great job of describing how passionate we are, how much we love what we do. Councilman Garland, you said, when you walked out, you said, "Thank you for your service." And immediately in my head, when people say, "Thank you for your service," I don't believe that our service is ever done, because once we get out, people say, "Oh, we're done with the military." No, no. John referenced the 22 veterans that kill themselves a day. It is a huge undertaking. I am the service officer for this post. That's if you have issues with medical, education, housing, it doesn't matter. John said that there's a gentleman that wanted to take a shower. It was very coincidental that we were doing our officer and written statements that very day. He walked in, he wanted to take a shower. I said, "Cool." We had a bunch of people there. We had a potluck, brought him food out. And while he was taking a shower and charging his phone, I walked out and I took somebody's hat off their head, and I said, "I just went like this." I went back to help the gentleman out, came back with the hat, $400 in there. Without question, five minutes. Nobody asked questions. We just knew that was a veteran, veteran in need. Shaking here. I can't say it enough. We love what we do. We would love the opportunity to keep doing, keep doing what we do. Anything and everything you guys have, we will take it. Doesn't matter what it is. Please and thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you. Appreciate it. The next speaker I have is Kim Gaffney Loza. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Kim Gaffney Loza, North Tempe. And I just wanted to speak in favor of the DeWitt Project that is going in along Miller and Curry Roads. Mr. Mantle was nice enough because he knows how passionate I am about plants to actually present the landscape plan to me. I made a couple of suggestions of things I thought that may not make it through the summers, and they gladly made those adjustments. But one of the other reasons that I'm really in favor of this, I think it's a perfect location for large density. It won't be overlooking any single-family homes. But the other thing that it will do, I feel, it will help activate that Indian Bend Wash area, which I hope at some time in the future, we will master plan. I know that's much future project, but I think that area really does need to be master-planned. I think this is also ideal because of where it's located as far as directing traffic. It is between a couple of major arteries, which are easily accessed by both Miller and Curry Roads, neither of which are very busy at this time. I also think that will help activate, hopefully, Scottsdale Road so we can get some better businesses in along that way and not look so much like a stop along the freeway, which I know you've heard me say before. So, anyway, I just wanted to let, the other thing I wanted to let you know, too, is I've heard some rumblings about the traffic, but when they had a virtual public meeting, even though I already knew about the project, I wanted to see what the neighborhood was concerned about, I was the only person at that virtual meeting. That really disappointed me, and the only reason I knew about it was because of the sign on the area. So, I didn't even receive a postcard. So, even the people that received postcards, no one showed up for that virtual public meeting. So, I just wanted you to be aware of that. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Next speaker I have is Philip Yates. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes to address the council.
I must apologize because I put down the wrong number.
That's okay. So, really, Mr. Yates, item 8B1, you could even just tell us which item it was you wanted to speak on.
Okay.
Yeah, we can make the adjustment for you.
All right. I was just going to look at the agenda.
Sure, sure.
And see which one it was. Yeah, for the record, my name is Philip Yates, and I'm the president for the Riverside Neighborhood Association. And I just wanted to say, there's going to be a development that is going to probably be down the street from us on Roosevelt and Fifth Street. And it used to be an adobe house, and for years and years, it was just an empty lot as an adobe house is sort of decrepitated, and there were a lot of homeless people that lived there. And on Tuesdays, excuse me, on Tuesdays, at the park right around the corner from that, there is a lot of people that go to the park and they take whatever they can get from the people that'll come, clothes, or food, or water, or whatever it is. But, which is, and that's, a lot of the people that stayed there would go over to that adobe house and stay overnight, and they can't do that anymore. But my point is going to be that I have seen the plans for the project, and it's fantastic-looking building, but I would hope that the developer that has proposed this would incorporate something to do with Native American architecture or art on the buildings that are going to be there, and/or in the landscaping, one way or another. Just incorporate something that is of Native American nature. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yates. Just one quick clarifying question from, I'm Mr. City Manager. Do you, just want to make sure I have the right item that Mr. Yates was talking about on the agenda, so I can make sure to correct the card here? Or Madam Clerk, if you see it as well, if you can shout it out to me? Tempe 11?
8B1?
8B1?
Yes, we believe it's 8B1.
Tempe 11 Project.
And actually, Mr. Yates, you were correct. It was 8B1. You were totally correct, so, thank you. All right, and the last card I have here is from Shamarki Jama. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes to address the council.
I have been having injustice for the police to arrest me for DUI, wrongful DUI, and denied for access of justice. And then they kick us out from the court, me and my wife. She's kind of pregnant for like nine months. They called the security guards. Till now, I'm still struggling by the state bar. I'm still trying to figure out, I mean, like, the reason I've been getting charged for. I mean, I don't know what to go from there, but it's like, there's no justice. It's kind of various on individual, I don't know, for the reason they charged me for. And then asking for the verdict, they didn't deprive me for. They're forcing me to take my fingerprints because I got a concealed carrier. I mean, there's no proof or witness or, like, for anything, so I just want to see, I mean, the City Council.
Well, thank you. I was going to, Mr. City Manager, since we're not allowed to engage, since it wasn't actually on the listed agenda, I was going to ask, Mr. City Manager, can we follow up or have a member of staff follow up about the matter this gentleman raised?
Sure. If he stays during the meeting here a little bit longer, we'll try to connect him with somebody before he goes.
Okay. Okay. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. That concludes all the comment cards that I had. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to address the City Council? If so, please get my attention. All right, seeing none. I will move forward with item number seven, which is the consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda will be considered as a group and will be enacted with one motion by the City Council unless an item is removed for separate consideration. Members of the public may remove public hearing items for separate consideration. Public hearing items are designated as public hearing item at the beginning of the item title. Council members may remove any item for separate consideration or to declare a conflict of interest. If a council member would like to declare a conflict at this time, the city clerk will provide the council member with a disclosure form. If you wish to speak on a public hearing item, please fill out a speaker card and submit your completed card to the clerk prior to the agenda item coming forward for council discussion. I will call your name when it is your turn for public comment. The consent agenda this evening is listed as miscellaneous items 7A1 through 7A11, awards of bids and contracts, items 7B1 through 7B18, and resolutions, items 7C1 through 7C11, with the exception of items 7A6, 7C2, 7C10, and, let's see, and 7B, okay, so 7A6, 7B2, 7C2, and 7C10, which are being removed for separate consideration, and item 7C1, which is being removed from the agenda. Is there any other item that council members wish to have removed for separate consideration? All right. Is there any other item here for some of the audience that, anything designated as a public hearing item can be removed for separate consideration? If anyone would like to have a public hearing item removed, just get my attention. All right. Hearing none. I'll ask for a motion then to approve the consent agenda, with the exception of items 7A6, 7B2, 7C1, 7C2, and 7C10. It's been moved by Councilmember Dvorak, seconded by Councilmember Chin. Please vote. Okay.
Aye.
All right. And that vote passes seven to zero. All right, first item here that is removed for separate consideration is item 7A6, which is to hold a public hearing to recommend the approval of a Series 10 beer and wine store liquor license for One Omkar LLC, DBA Tempe Market at 1125 South Terrace Road. Would staff like to make a statement on this item? I see Tom Dunzing, our Deputy City Manager and Chief Financial Officer.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and Council. Tom Dunzing, for the record, Deputy City Manager. Before you this evening is a request to hold a public hearing to recommend approval of a Series 10 wine store, or, excuse me, beer and wine store license at 1125 South Terrace Road. Recommendation of this and any other liquor license is based on a review of the application by the Police, Fire, and Community Development Department to ensure the establishment meets city code criteria. No issues have been identified by any department on this particular license. As council knows, the city is not the final approval. The action tonight is then forwarded to the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control, or DLLC, who ultimately issues the liquor license. Department representatives are here if Mayor and Council has any questions. I also understand there's public speakers wishing to address this item. I also understand that the applicant's agent is also in attendance and can answer any questions. Mayor, I'm available for questions, or we can open up a public hearing.
Sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Dunzing. Anyone from the council have any comments, questions? All right, hearing none. I will see if the applicant's agent is present and would like to make a statement. You don't have to if you don't want to, but if you want to, yeah.
I prefer wait.
You prefer wait? Okay, sounds good. All right. Then I will go ahead and close the public hearing.
No.
Oh, wait a minute. My bad. Got the cards right here. All right, before I close the public hearing, I have a number of speakers here. The first- public hearing, I have a number of speakers here. The first speaker I have here is Meek Hamad.
Mike Hamad.
Mike Hamad. Yes, sir. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes to address the council.
Good evening, guys. I know we all lost a game tonight. We're not gonna watch any game tonight, NFL. Anyhow, let's enjoy. My name is Mike Hamad, and I'm a resident of the Scarsdale, but I've been in Tempe since 2004. And everybody knows me. I own a Sunstop Liquors and Hungover Hoggies. It's good sandwiches, by the way. And I never have any complaint about any business to open around me at all. But this is the first time I've been complaining. The reason I'm complaining is safety. Safety is number one for those kids. They come from East Coast. They don't know nothing about the light rail. And I took some pictures. If you guys want to pass it to the mirror or anything, I really appreciate it. It's safety is number one. This business has been like, ten times they've been opening, and probably city of Tempe, they rolled like over 400 ticket citations. Those kids, they don't know nothing about the light rail. They're gonna hate, they're gonna do a lot of things. You know that. There is a lot of drunk kids. There is kids that don't know that. And we are worried about those kids. And always, everybody knows me, I have a sign, please do not cross the light rail. And this location is very, very dangerous. We are worried about those kids. And also, I have another big villa, they have like a 2,000 employees resident. They all complain about this location. Please, let's not be open. And let's not be, save some lives. And we are worried about those kids. Those kids, they don't know nothing about it. They are 19, 20. And there is a lot of liquor store around here. There is a lot of alcohol. There is a lot of things. No matter what, they're gonna cross the line. And they're gonna hit by the train. And so I'm just worried about those kids. Those kids, their life is matter. I'll be honest with you. And that's it. Thank you so much, guys. I really appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
The next speaker I have is Jose Hernandez. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes to address the council.
My name is Jose Hernandez. I live in, here in Tempe. I will be speaking on behalf of the following businesses: El Paisano Mexican Food LLC, Fatima LLC, Chance Noodle House, Analytical Enthusiast LLC, Desi Plaza, Shirma Paradise, and the 400-plus signatures collected from residents who live within 1.5 miles of the address, 1125 South Terrace Road. We are asking if there is a possibility of bringing other type of businesses near the ASU campus that are not liquor stores. We believe in equality and for anyone to have an opportunity to establish a new business here in Tempe. Our concerns come from having multiple liquor stores within the same area, which will lead to competitive prices. And competitive prices will mean that alcohol prices will be reduced, and it will lead to making alcohol more accessible to ASU students. This is also a safety risk for the community and our emergency resources. The more alcohol that is consumed by Tempe residents, the more possibilities of accidents where police and fire departments need to be dispatched. The second concern that these businesses share in common is the increase of homeless traffic within the area. Students and residents have reported to business owners the harassment by homeless people asking them for money, food, or liquor. The last thing we would like to request from the city council is to further review the data on alcohol-related accidents and arrests before approving new liquor licenses in an area where there are 10 liquor stores within less than a mile. This is not including restaurants, bars, and then also pharmacies who sell alcohol. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Next speaker I have is, I believe it's Jane or Jake Smith. I apologize, I couldn't tell.
No, I just have horrible handwriting.
You and me, you and me both, my friend. No worries. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes to address the council.
Council members, my name is Jake Smith. I'm a resident of Tempe. I'm here to represent Nor Enterprise LLC concerning the matter of 1125 South Terrace Road in Tempe, the liquor store that they're planning on opening there. In the half-mile radius around that store, there are already 10 separate liquor stores. And so the neighborhood has raised concerns, and we're requesting that you remain stationary on the number of liquor stores until that's taken into consideration. There's a few concerns that we raise. One is that we aren't sure how confident we are in their ID verification requirements. If they were looking to undercut the businesses surrounding them, they could become lax on the ID requirements, be willing to take losses for a few years, and after that, they undercut all the businesses in Tempe. And that's why, that's one of our concerns. The other one is safety. As raised by the prior members that spoke before you, we're worried about drunken-related, alcohol-related incidents. Tempe is already fifth in the entire state of Arizona for accidents. 4.5% roughly is alcohol-related in the entire state. The 18 to 25 age bracket consists of 20% of all alcohol-related incidents in any capacity, considering that we're right next to the campus with this location, the ASU campus. We're right next to it. That's the bracket that we need to be concerned with. And so we're just, we're raising concerns that this may be a safety issue as well as possible business failure on their part and ruining the city of Tempe in their stead. I guess that you take this under consideration. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The next speaker I have is Preston Smith. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Mayor Woods and council members. My name is Preston Smith. I'm a student here at ASU. I'll be a senior this year. And I'm here because of the liquor license located at 1125 South Terrace Road. I came forth today in hope to keep my community I live in safer place. I've lived in Tempe the past three years. Apollo, right next to this new store is where I lived last year. Almost every day last year, I would pass the empty building by my apartment, thinking how cool it would be for a business in that place to help the community. When I heard the news it would be turned into another liquor store, my heart kind of sunk. In the surrounding area, we already have a plethora of stores already selling liquor, so why another? The opening of this business is not to help the community, but instead make money off of college students like myself in the area because of convenience. With the surrounding area being mostly college students, what use does this store actually have? This new, this new store would add to an overflow of liquor and intoxicated individuals to my neighborhood, something that my neighbors and I don't need. Adding this store to this area will do nothing but cause problems to the community, and I'm here to try and stop it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. The next speaker I have is Janelle Simpson. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is Javel Simpson, and I'm a resident here in Tempe, Arizona. Thank you all for this opportunity to speak before you. I'm here on behalf of GoYinur LLC about the liquor license for the Tempe Market located at 1125 South Terrace Road in Tempe. Stated by the previous gentleman, there are quite a few liquor stores already in the area. And one of the main concerns is that this opening of another liquor store is gonna further, like, hurt the community. As I've been in this area for quite some time, I see there's, I got to see the transformation, got to see the new buildings being built, going from empty lots, and also with that, seeing more people move into the area. The thing that I think this kind of sucks is that you also start to see more loitering around the stores that are already there. Several of the businesses have already had to, you know, start hiring security just to kind of help out with the drunkenness around there. So it would be nice to add a business in the area that actually helps the community, and that actually gives Tempe a positive image and gets ASU away from the party school image that, you know, that we have. So, you know, hopefully, I know if there's anything you can do to prevent this, and, you know, hopefully we can get a better qualified business in the area. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next up, I have Jean Rosen Kaiser. Please come forward, state your name and place of residence. You have three minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name's Jean Rosen Kaiser. I live in Tempe, in Hudson Manor. And I'm also here as an employee of New School for the Arts and Academics, which is in the neighborhood in question for this liquor license at 1125 South Terrace Road. I am not speaking on an official capacity, but our admin has discussed it, and we have talked to the owners of Sunstop, who we have a great relationship with, and we trust their carting processes, particularly for tobacco in our cases with kids. And we really haven't had any issues. Any we've had have been to our east in, with previous owners over there. But overall, I think as one of the people who gives the tours and is a spokesperson for the school, we do get questions about all the liquor stores in the area. So the more there are, the more that gets difficult to explain. And it's one thing to explain something like Sunstop, which was there before we moved in. We didn't move in until 2002 to that site. So it's one thing to explain something like that, and I can confidently tell the parents that we have a good relationship. We trust them. They're not gonna let the kids loiter. They're not going to let them stand outside and ask people to buy things for them. We're confident. We are not confident about all the new stuff that's popping up. And so we just wanted it known that we're concerned and we're watching. That's all that, you know, keeping an eye out. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much. That is all the cards I have. I just want to turn back to see if the applicant or the applicant's agent would like to speak. You don't have to, but if you'd like to, you are more than welcome to.
Yes.
Okay, yes. Please come forward.
I'll also have it with me on.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Just, please state your name and place of residence.
My name is Jared Rapinski, and I have with me Gita Bat. We are both residents of Chandler. I think the two primary things to address within this, first off, the safety concerns. It's a brand-new build-out. It was completely gutted. There's a kitchen, you know, going in. This is a market in the truest sense of what a market can be. So if there's any, you know, safety concerns about lighting or anything along those lines, because everything is still, you know, very much under construction, those things can be addressed, and that's very easy to do, especially within the build-out. The second thing, in my experience as an agent, sometimes this happens when there is opposition, it's a mischaracterization of what is actually the business that is going in there. It is not a liquor store. It is a marketplace. There's gonna be anywhere from Band-Aids to bananas.
No, no, milk. It's a convenience store, along with the food.
It's very much a convenience store. It's not a liquor store. It's a beer and wine. The beer and wine is very ancillary to the primary, which is convenience items.
For the students.
For the students, energy drinks, sodas, chips, you know, just quick service items that they run out of at home and that they're going to need. So as far as the, you know, the disappointment that there's a liquor store going in there, that is just not the case. That's not what this, what this business is, or anything along those lines. But I will turn this over to you if you had anything else to add on how you, from what you've heard and what you would want to say and address.
Yeah, just, what do you say? I have experience with, I have a Jerry's Liquor, and I know how to handle the liquor store. I have, I'm in the business since 2002. You stopped convenience store 2002, we took over in Mesa. We have no single tickets. We've been handling business since a long time, and I always stays there, me or my husband.
She also owns another market in Phoenix called Lucky Market.
Lucky Market.
And she was also the owner and sold back in, I want to say 2020.
That is a market, too.
Sun Devil Liquor. So she has a wealth of experience. If there's concerns about IDN, and she has an impeccable record with a variety of those locations.
We have a trained employee who checks the ID and everything.
And myself as the agent, whom which, part of the services that I provide as the agent, I'm a title four, approved title four trainer within the Department of Liquor. So it's a requirement that, you know, an agreement that everybody's title four.
He is with us since 2002.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Awesome. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Seeing that that's all the speakers I have, and the applicant's spoken, I will now close the public hearing and look to the council for any comments. I just have one quick question, I guess, for Mr. Dunzing. In, does, I'm just, sort of just hearing, you know, what both, folks on both sides of this issue have said, and obviously, as you talked about, it's sort of a very different thing that to have a liquor license pulled, usually they just sort of go through very quickly and easily without any concern. And so the fact that this one has risen to this level gives me a little bit of concern, a little bit of heartburn. I was gonna ask you, is there any reason why this specifically has to go this evening? Or is there time, if this was delayed to a future meeting, for us to do a little bit more investigating and to get some additional information, to see if we could clear up a lot of what's going on here? Because quite honestly, that's my big thing. It's trying to make sure that, you know, everyone in the community and folks in this area are living in a level of harmony with one another, and if there are kind of misconceptions on either side about what's going on here, I would love to see if we could find a way to broker some of that and bring people together. So, going back to my question, I guess, is, is there a hard and fast stop on this having to go this evening? Or if the council made the decision to move this to a different meeting, could we actually do that?
Yeah, members of the council, thank you. There's a statutory deadline we have to get our, the recommendation to the Department of Liquor License and Control. That statutory deadline, we're well within it. This item could be pushed to the September 22 regular council meeting, and we will still be within that 60-day statutory limit.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dunzing. Next up, will you go to Councilmember Chin?
Mayor, I move to approve.
Okay. Moved by Councilmember Chin, and it's been seconded by, and seconded by Councilmember Navarro. Yes, now additional comments, Councilmember Garland.
I just want to say, you know, what was stated earlier, I think, by Tom, that you said that this is a recommendation from the city council that just goes through, but there's still opportunity for appeal or concern from the same residents to state, correct?
Yes, Mayor, members of council, that's correct.
Because the license doesn't get approved by us, it just gets recommended to go to the state.
Correct. A protest can be filed with the state.
Okay. And then, you know, the other thing I'd say, that however this ends up going, I mean, I think this is a really great opportunity. The people who are concerned with the owner of what this place could be like is sitting right there. I can't remember her name, ma'am. I'm sorry. The art school, having the opportunity to talk to her and tell her what your expectations are or your hopes are, this is a great opportunity for you guys to change numbers and maybe talk to each other and really get to know each other and find out what, you know, what you guys could do as a community, just in your area. But just a thought, just want to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Any other council members need additional comments? I guess my one quick comment is that, and just a quick kind of procedural thing, one of the challenges of being mayor is that you don't get to make or second motions. I mean, I basically just sort of run and conduct the meeting, which is just fine. You know, my preference would have been, you know, frankly, on this one, to have pushed this to a future meeting, because I think that there are some additional questions that need to be kind of answered. I appreciate the work that the staff has done on this, though, in terms of all the work that goes into the, into the recommending of the approval of this. You know, I hate to see, you know, business owners all kind of within the same corridor with some level of disagreement, whatever, or dispute about kind of what this is, or some of the safety concerns, or things of that nature. And that would be, my personal preference, would be to move this to a future meeting to allow us to get a little bit more time on this matter. At the end of the day, though, I am happy that you're at least saying, though, that there is another option, whatever, for an approval at the state level. If a lot of the folks here who are very passionate would like to continue to appeal this, at least there's some other mechanism to do something, because I want to make sure I'm definitely honoring the motion that's on the table and been seconded. So I just wanted to make that statement, but I am done. So, Councilman Var.
Mayor, thank you. Yeah, and I agree. And thank you for the people that came up and shared the concerns. And I think it, obviously, you know, just for the council to listen to is great, and seeing what we can do. But at the end of the day, this is a state matter. This is a matter that the state would have to address and look at. And I hope that with the explanations that have been set here tonight, being a convenience store versus a liquor store, there is a clear difference within that. And it is set up as a convenience store, as an old Circle K, I guess it looked like from one day at a time back in the day. But when I'm looking around the whole area, and actually lived there on Lemon and Terrace as a kid, I know exactly, you know, the locations of all this stuff. And there is plenty of liquor stores right around the street, around there. And so I do agree with that. But at the end of the day, this is But at the end of the day, this is going to be a state matter that has to be addressed there. So I appreciate you guys coming out and saying your concerns. But this, just like I said, this is just a recommendation to go to the state for the final approval.
One, thank you, Councilmember Var. One last question, Tom. I was just going to ask you, what does that approve? What does that process look like at the state level? Just so for everyone here, just even for my own edification.
Yeah, Mayor, members of council. State statute kind of spells out the protest process. If the protester's unaware of the process, I'd be happy to point him to state statute. I mean, it's pretty straightforward. And it prescribes the actual items that they need that they would file directly with the Department of Liquor License and Control. I'm not aware of the exact items, but I know it's spelled out pretty clearly in state statute.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you. All right. Any other comments or questions from council? All right. Call for the question. With that being said, please vote.
Aye. Aye.
And that item passes seven to zero. Thank you very much. All right. Let's see. Next item is 7B2, which is to award a two-year contract with three one-year renewal options to Fabric Tempe Hustle Phoenix Pacific Southwest Minority Supplier Development Council, Rail CDC, and Tempe Chamber of Commerce for business consulting services and the administration of grant funds relating to the Growing BIPOC Manufacturing, Micro Manufacturing Program. This has been pulled for separate consideration. I believe it was pulled by Councilmember Chin. Councilmember Chin.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to pull this and acknowledge this item and the magnitude of it and what it means for many people. It's the Growing BIPOC Micro Manufacturing Program. It supports local entrepreneurs and small business owners, especially those who've been traditionally left behind. And they face the greatest obstacles in manufacturing, which is space and capital to do so. The one item that I remember from my macroeconomics class is that in order to affect an overall economy, you have to support small and medium businesses. I think this is critical to the success of the overall economy. And I'd like to thank city staff and all of our community partners in launching this program. I want to congratulate and recognize the partners and their commitment to this success. And I look forward to future updates on its progress. And I move to approve.
Thank you, Councilmember Chin. Seconded by Councilmember Garland. With that, please vote.
Aye.
Aye.
And that item passes seven to zero. Next up, we have item 7C2. Item 7C2 is to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager or his designated executive agreement between the Chandler Police Department and the City of Tempe Police Department to allow Tempe Police Department to utilize Chandler Police Department SWAT for special events on an as-needed basis. Council, any comments or discussion? None of mine? All right. If there's none, I would entertain a motion. Moved by Councilmember Navarro and seconded by Councilmember Garland. Please vote.
Aye.
Aye.
And that item passes seven to zero. The next item on the agenda is 7C10, which is to adopt a resolution that approve and accept grant funds from the U.S. Department of Agriculture Natural Resources Conservation Service for the Grow Local Tempe Policies and Roadmaps to Expand Urban Agriculture for a Healthier and Happier Tempe Grant to the City of Tempe. Couple of quick things on this item. I should ask, first of all, any comments or questions? But I've got some comments. If I can find them. Ah, there we go. I wanted to make sure I wrote these down just to make sure that I could actually talk about this. So the Office of Sustainability and Resilience for the City of Tempe, which is doing a phenomenal job. They're receiving a $200,000 Urban Agriculture and Innovation Production Grant from the U.S. Department of Agriculture. The grant funding is going to go towards the Grow Local Tempe Initiative to expand urban agriculture development and education within our community, which is great. It's going to help to connect more vulnerable Tempe residents to the benefits of urban agriculture, which include increased economic opportunity, nutrition, food security, and well-being. And we'll continue to partner with many partners like Arizona State University, the Arizona Sustainability Alliance, Unlimited Potential, and Sana Sana, to name a few, in order to elevate voices in the plan development from urban agriculture experts to the region's indigenous communities as well. So the funding, lastly, I should say, is going to be utilized to develop a plan for community gardens and other access to food in a specific part of the city, which is the Apache Boulevard Corridor. Area businesses are Tempe Elementary Schools, such as Thu and Connolly Elementary, and other city facilities will be potential sites. And eventually, this pilot could be expanded to be something citywide. So I just wanted to thank the great work that our Office of Sustainability and Resilience has done to acquire these funds and to continue to do a lot of the great work that they are already doing. So I just wanted to say thank you. With that, anyone else have additional comments? Been moved by Councilmember Garland. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Chin. Please vote.
Aye.
Aye.
And that passes seven to zero. Next up, we have item number eight, which is the Non-Consent Agenda. All items listed on the Non-Consent Agenda will be considered separately. Agenda items scheduled for introduction and first public hearing will be heard but will not be voted upon at this meeting. Agenda items scheduled for second public hearing and final adoption will be voted upon tonight. Second, oh, councilmembers who may have a conflict of interest may abstain from voting on a matter, and the city clerk will provide the councilmembers with the disclosure form at this time. The first item under the section is item 8A1, which is to approve one-year contract renewals with Pride Outfitting and Airwave Communications for the installation of emergency communication and lighting products on public safety vehicles and warning lighting and accessories on city utility vehicles. Council, any comments or discussion? Okay. It's been moved by Councilmember Navarro. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Garland. Please vote.
Aye.
Aye.
And that item passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is 8A2, which is to approve a one-year contract renewal with Somerset Landscape, Yellowstone Landscape Company, for the installation of landscaping and irrigation for street beautification and right-of-way landscaping projects for the Engineering and Transportation Department. Council, any comments or discussion? Been moved by Councilmember Navarro. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Chin. Please vote.
Aye. Aye.
And that item also passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is 8A3, which is to adopt a resolution authorizing a maximum dollar amount for an individual job order of up to $1.5 million for the purpose of procuring construction services for the HVAC Improvement City Hall Campus West Garden, project number 6708842T. Council, any comments or discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
It's been moved by Councilmember Navarro. I'm going to give the second to Vice Mayor Adams. Please vote.
Aye.
Aye.
And that item passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is 8A4, which is to award job order number 29 to Forsight Design and Construction Incorporated for the HVAC Improvement City Hall Campus West Garden Project located at 31 East 5th Street. Council, any comments or discussion?
So move.
Been moved by Councilmember Hodge. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Adams. I love it. Please vote.
Aye.
And that item passes seven to zero. I like it. The phone game is strong tonight. The next item under the section is 8A5, which is to adopt a resolution authorizing a maximum dollar amount for an individual job order of up to $1.25 million for the purpose of procuring construction services for the city elevator improvements, municipal parking garage, police building prisoner, Tempe Escalante Multi-Generational Center. Council, any comments or discussion? Moved by Councilmember Navarro and seconded by Councilmember Garland. Please vote.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yes, Vice Mayor Adams.
Knowing those elevators, it's very important that we keep them up to date as a lot of them are aging. So I will be voting yes on this. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you, Vice Mayor Adams. Any other comments or questions? All right. Guess seeing none, please vote. Vice Mayor Adams?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you so much. That item passes seven to zero. Next item under the section is 8A6, which is to award job order number 34 to Caliente Construction Incorporated for the city elevator improvements, municipal parking garage, police building prisoner, Tempe Escalante Multi-Generational Center, located, project located at 117 East 5th Street, 120 East 5th Street, and 2150 East Orange Street, respectively. Council, any comments or discussion? It's been moved by Vice Mayor Adams. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Hodge. Any comments or question? All right. Please vote.
Aye.
Aye.
And that item passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is 8A7, which was to award a construction contract to B&amp;F Contracting Incorporated for the jointly-owned Rehabilitation 2022 Project located at various locations throughout the city. Council, any comments or discussion? Moved by Councilmember Navarro. Seconded by Councilmember Garland. Please vote.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Adams?
Oh, yes. You didn't hear me. I did say aye.
Ah, perfect. Thank you so much. That item passes seven to zero. The last item under the section is 8A8, which is to approve a change order allowance to Builders Guild Incorporated for the Envision Center Resiliency Hub Project located at 1310 East Apache Boulevard. Council, any comments or discussion?
So move.
Moved by Councilmember Hodge. Seconded by Councilmember Garland. Oh, do you, any comments or?
I was just.
Yes.
I was just going to say, just reading the details and information about this building, I'm so excited about the Envision Center going on. And it just made me feel so sad that we now have to deal with the roof issue that was not seen. Going through construction in my very old house right now, doing some remodeling, I understand that you peel back a wall and you're just shocked what's back there or not back there. But I just appreciate you guys forging forward because this Envision Center is going to be pretty incredible in our community. It's the right location and the right thing to do. So I'm glad that it's moving forward, and we're going to get the roof fixed. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Any other comments? Hearing none, please vote.
Aye.
Aye.
And that item passes seven to zero. The next section on the Non-Consent Agenda is ordinances and items for introduction and first hearing. These items will be read and introduced tonight, but no votes will be taken. The second hearing and vote for these items is scheduled for September 22, 2022. The first item under the section is 8B1, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a planned area development overlay to modify development standards and a development plan review for a new two-story, single-family development consisting of 11 dwelling units on .59 acres for Tempe 11, located at 408 East Roosevelt, sorry, South Roosevelt Street, excuse me. The applicant is AJT Development LLC. Would the applicant like to give a presentation? Yes, sir. Mr. Gosicki.
Evening, Mayor. Councilmembers. My name is Tom Gosicki. Okay. This, this is the corner, southwest corner of 5th Street and Roosevelt. This rendering is taken from, say, someone standing right in the center of the corner, looking both north and west. I'd like to mention that this is not my first development in Tempe. This is 600 West 5th Street. I've done 1214 West 5th Street, 1300 West 5th Street, also 1301 West 4th Street. This is standing on the north end of the property on Roosevelt, looking south. And again, west, it's the corner of the property. Like to note right here that the front porch area there, all the projects I've done, if any of you have driven down to Priest, have front porches in them. And I found in all the projects, people really use these front porches. It adds to a little community. You know, people say hello. People see people on the front porches. Here's our site plan. We've divided it up into three buildings. We're entering off of Roosevelt. I like dividing up the project, not creating a straight two rows of buildings. I find it more attractive. We're also doing two stories. We made choices on the last two projects not to do a three-story. We find that sometimes it's overpowering on a small street like 5th Street or any of the other streets in the neighborhood. I see a lot of buildings here. I've been doing this in Tempe now 14, 15 years. So we have two-car garage parking for everyone. We have four guest parking off the alley. We also, you can see inside on the side of the garage, I offset the garage doors. I've talked to refuse people. We're going to do private individual cans on this that people will take out to the streets. There's an area inside the garage, the four-foot side of the garage, where the two recycling cans and the trash cans will be placed. Here's our location here. I happen to really like this area of Tempe. I think it's a pretty exciting, vibrant area, especially with, every time, there's new stuff going on. It's pretty great. Here's an enlarged shot of the corner right here. These are just different shots of the street. I'm guessing everyone's familiar with the street right there. If anyone has any questions, please ask. Here's some straight-on elevations of the building. In the planning review, those dark boxes down below are the front porches. They wanted them to remove from the drawings so there could be a clear visual of the unit. This is the three-unit building on the north side of the property. These are the side elevations of Building A, the three-unit building. Building B, the two-unit building in the back of the property. These garages will enter from the alley. Side elevations of Building B. I personally think our buildings are pretty interesting. A lot of movement in them, a lot of changes in color. This is the Roosevelt, I mean, straight on 5th Street. Side elevations. I like landscaping. Again, if anybody's been by the project, you see a lot of landscaping in there. I really like a lot of landscape. I pick out all my trees and stuff for. Unit sizes, floor plans.
How many bedrooms? Sorry, Mayor. A question. How many bedrooms per unit?
Three bedrooms.
Three bedrooms?
One on the down, three bedrooms, three baths. One on the downstairs floor, one on the, two on the upstairs floor. And the upstairs floor where the, can I go backwards? Where the windows are is up in the living room. It's a copula up in the living room, takes living up 14 feet and creates extra light without the sun coming directly into the units. People really enjoy that particular feature.
So rent or for sale? Rent or for sale?
For sale. This is a subdivision. We're requesting a plot map, which will be going on. Yeah. And then the floor plans come into play right here. I can only say that, you know, people like living in my projects.[1682.99] I can only say that, you know, people like living in my projects. People buy my projects. They find them attractive and very livable. Landscaping, you can see all the trees and stuff. I mean, I do enjoy my landscaping. This is our grading and drainage plan. And I just don't, not sure how much detail you guys want me to go into at the time.
Well, I see a couple of folks have questions. Councilmember Navarro, you get your, okay, you're good.
Well, I'll go after her.
Let me do Councilmember Garland and Councilmember Chin.
I was just gonna say that I like that this is owner, that this is an owner and not a rental. I think that's a great thing for us to have in the community. I appreciate that it's a two-story and not a three. I do like the idea because I think that that's more welcoming to the community. You've got houses that are around you, so I think having a two-story back there is not as bad as going three or four or something like that, so I appreciate that. I like the drawings and the renderings. And I like the patios. I 100% believe that you have a patio in the front yard and you're out there, people are gonna come out there and join you. I have one in my front yard. People walk by. We share coffee, wine in the evening, I guess. But I just, I'd like that welcoming feeling and I like that you added that to, to the project.
Thank you.
I think it looks great.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Councilmember Chin?
Thank you for coming tonight. I love front patios and porches also. I think they look very nice. I'd like to ask you to look at your landscaping and recognize that we're in a drought condition, just to be mindful. I'm not asking for any changes right now, but just to be mindful of the types of trees and the landscape that you plant, that we try to conserve as much as possible.
Absolutely, absolutely. Most of the smaller plants are in the drought tolerant category. Even lanthana, you know, the flowers go nice on them, but they're in a, ruella, another drought tolerant plant, yet it's green and it has flowers on it and so forth. The trees are governed a little bit to some degree by the city of Tempe, and they recommend certain trees for us to put in, and what I'm putting in is recommended by the city.
Thank you, Councilmember Chin. Councilmember Navarro?
Oh, Mayor, thank you. I appreciate, and thank you. These are great. I think I've seen a few of your projects. You're just, it's very mindful of the neighborhood, how you're creating, what you're creating there. Two-story is great. I'm not opposed to three every now and then, but you know, where we're at and how you're doing it is perfect. When it comes to landscape, my biggest thing is how we're matching the streetscape, how we're integrating with the other looks and what the city is doing. Types of trees, I'd almost say it's the type of tree that the city is implementing within the right-of-ways, but I know Fifth Street has this very treescape, you know, arena going up and down. And just being able to semi-match the vibrance of what Fifth Street is doing, I think is strategically important as we are transforming, you know, potentially that, that street and other streets off that street, maybe it'd be single home residential or a multi, you know, condo unit type of thing. I think, you know, just making that connection, I think just really does good for the whole entire neighborhood.
Yes, I agree with you. I have contact, you have two people in Tempe. One does the street maintenance work and another one is in fact a tree, a tree person. And I'm in contact with both of them and we'll discuss further because I have concerns about a couple of things, but that'll get taken care of with them.
Excellent. Thank you. Anyone else on the phone have any comments or questions?
Mr. Mayor, I did have a question, but Councilmember Navarro took my, he just took my question right away from me. I was gonna ask about the trees and the landscaping to involve in it, so he just kinda stole my thunder. Thank you, Councilmember Navarro.
If it's any consolation, Councilmember Hodge, great minds, the like, so.
You're good.
There we go. Thank you, Senator. Thank you. All right. I don't have any immediate comments or questions. Anything else, Mr. Gosicki?
No, if you guys are good, I'm good.
All right, sounds good. Excellent. Thank you so much. Appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to address the city council on this item? Speakers have up to three minutes to address the council. I'll get my attention, please. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, any additional comments or discussion? All right, seeing none, just want to reiterate that the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for September 22, 2022. The next item under the section is 8B2, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a zoning map amendment from R2H Multi-Family Residential District with a historic overlay property designation and removal of a portion of the historic overlay property designation for the new, from the new rear lot within approximately .08 acres for the Butler House property located at 1220 South Mill Avenue. Counsel, would you like to hear a presentation from staff on this item? I just have one quick thing that I would love. Is there someone from staff who could talk about this? Ryan, I didn't even see you down there. Wow, it's like, it's good to see you, Ryan Leveque, our deputy community development director. Ryan, just a question. So I know there's been a lot of conversation about this in our community and just, I just want to kind of explain what the council, moving forward with this item, actually does when it comes to the preservation of a historic home and frankly, what would happen if the council didn't choose to take this action?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. So the utmost goal and effort of this request specifically was for preservation of the historic Butler Gray House that is designated on the local Tempe listing. Back in November last year, we had received a demolition permit request to demolish the property and build a larger property development. That request, because it's historically designated, was taken to the Historic Preservation Commission and was denied by this Historic Preservation Commission. That gave us the opportunity to create a 180-day stay of demolition and to negotiate alternatives from demolition for the property site. We met with the Historic Preservation Staff. We met with the property owner on a number of occasions, discussed their reasonings and concerns for demolishing the property, were able to discuss the significance of the property, and then looking into alternatives for the site. There was many different alternatives. There was discussed, there was discussions about preserving the property, property, possibly selling the property, conservation easements, possibly an accessory dwelling out the back of the property as an alternative to redevelopment. Ultimately, we landed on being able to preserve the home by, one, splitting the property in half and developing a facade conservation easement on the property, the historic home, that would basically then allow the owner of the property or a future owner to build a future home off the back of the alley. So a lot of properties in the Maple Ash neighborhood have accessory dwellings that have either rear yard access or a second unit on the property because the property is zoned multifamily. But this preservation is, now, we have a five-year facade conservation easement that preserves the home in its current state and current condition, and there's already a subdivision plat for the property. This request before you tonight is to remove the historic designation over the vacant portion of the site, but we are still keeping the historic designation over the Butler Gray House property.
Wonderful. Thank you, Ryan. Appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else from the, I should leave me just quickly check with the audience. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the city council on this item? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Counsel, any comments or discussion? All right, hearing none, just want to reiterate, second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for September 22, 2022. The next item under the section is 8B3, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a zoning map amendment from GID to MU4, a planned area development overlay to establish development standards, a public hearing to adopt a resolution authorizing a general plan density map amendment from medium to high density to high-density urban core, and approve a development plan review for a new six-story mixed-use development consisting of 207 dwelling units and commercial area for the DeWitt at North Miller Road, located at 907 North Miller Road. The applicant is Hugh Mantle and Affiliates. Would the applicant like to make a presentation, Mr. Hugh Mantle?
Up to the council. Happy to make one if you'd like, happy to not, if you prefer not.
I'd love to at least see, see one this evening. This is the first, first hearing, so just the public has an opportunity to see the project.
Absolutely. It's early in the evening and so we've got plenty of time, so.
We sure do.
Having said that, in all seriousness, so thank you, Kim, for your comments. Kim has really done a great job at articulating some of the issues, so I'll try to go quickly today. Of course, happy to spend more time if you'd like. You've seen me talk about this area in the past. This area was previously known as sort of the county island area. This piece has always been in the city, but it's on an island sort of of its own. This area you probably recognize from the powder coat shop that's been there almost forever, although ironically, not much powder coating has gone on the outside of it, and so this building has seen its, its probably best days long, long since. A lot of storage happens on site as the neighborhood has really taken the county island in and tried to transform things. Miller Road comes back into parts of Tempe that the city has spent lots of time and money along the lake in transforming, and we'd like to continue this transformation. In fact, one of the things the council spoke of earlier was, and Mr. Navarro, I think it was you who brought up the desire for Tempe to continue to have street trees. Early in the process, you indicated that was something that was important to you, and so we've matched the street trees along with what's happened across the street on a project that's well underway, the Banyan Project. You can see this project will be similar in scale to what's under construction across the street. The homes that are being built across the street are homes that were in fact in the county island until this council took action. You can see that the industrial nature of what's across the street doesn't fit this area or the Indian Ben Wash that Kim and others have spoken of recently. I'll go through some of these more quickly, knowing that it's been a long evening already. This is the building we have proposed. I think it's worth noting that Kim, Darlene, Lane, and others have been supportive. We have not heard at any of our neighborhood meetings with the planning commission, any negative comment, and the planning commission supported us 7-0. When I say us, I mean the applicant as well as staff. We're in complete agreement with staff and the conditions of approval. Appreciate the work that staff has done to work with us on a pretty tight site to come up with a project that works for everyone. And I'm happy to spend significantly more time talking, but I don't know that it's helpful at the moment.
Got it. Thank you, Mr. Hugh Mantle. Really appreciate it. Anyone from the council, any comments or questions for Mr. Hugh Mantle?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor Adams?
Well, I just want to say that I really like the looks of this project. It's, it's got some really nice features and I just appreciate such a cool project being brought forward in our city, so thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you, Vice Mayor Adams. Councilmember Garland?
I was just gonna say, I think it's, I think it's the right thing at the right location. This is, I mean, this was a pretty easy one for me when I was going through the paperwork on it. You know, I, I recognize this area because I volunteered with the, Keep Tempe Beautiful likes to pick up things around in that area. They've been out there a number of times, but I, I like what you're gonna do because I think it's really gonna transform that area and make it more of a place where people are gonna want to bike and ride and be a part of that because the community, another really strong community will be there. So I think it's, again, it's the right thing at the right location, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Garland. Any other council members, comments or questions? Yeah, my only comment was gonna be Mr. Hugh Mantle, too. I really appreciate, you know, Kim being here this evening and you talking about a lot of the longtime neighborhood advocates and presidents of the associations up in North Tempe being supportive of the project. That definitely, I said a lot about what you're doing in terms of the outreach of the quality of this project and the ability to continue to transform the area, kind of like what, what Kim talked about earlier, not just simply transforming the area with other high-quality housing, but also the ability to change some of the demographics, to get some of the different kinds of retail and food and beverage options that I know residents of North Tempe have wanted for quite some time. So I do believe this project will absolutely help to continue to do that. So appreciate the presentation and appreciate the outreach you've done to the neighborhood.
Thank you. I think that one of the things that makes Tempe as strong as it is, one of my favorite things about it is residents like Kim who will take the time to work on a project and make things better, to come with, forward with positive comments. Some communities have people who just complain. We have people who care and show up and participate and work to make things better, and so I thank Kim and others. Like, you thank Kim.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Hugh Mantle. Really appreciate it. All right, anyone else in the audience wishing to address the council? Please get my attention. All right, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Counsel, any additional comments or discussion? Hearing none, just want to reiterate that the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for September 22, 2022. The next item under the section is AB4, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 29, Article 2 of the Tempe City Code by amending Section 29-25 relating to the use of alleys as thoroughfares. Counsel, any comments or questions? Yes, Councilmember Keating.
Thank you, Mayor. We received a council communicator on this issue. I did talk to PD to get some clarification, but you know, just for the sake of the public, if there's a member of the police department that could kind of clarify what exactly this is doing, because in the email, there was definitely a misconception that we were criminalizing people walking in the alley, and we all know that that's not the case. So just for like the public record, if there's a member of PD that could clarify what this is.
Sounds good. Thank you, Councilmember Keating. Is there a member of the police department here who can speak to this item?
If I was there, I would.
Oh, no, I, I see Chief Glover coming in. He's here.
Almost. Awesome, thank you.
Thank you so much. Chief Glover, if you wouldn't mind, Councilmember Keating just had a question about this item because he's, you know, talked about a council communicator being received and the concern from the resident was about criminalizing, sort of trespassing in the alley, and basically he had, he'd spoken to you before and, you know, you had kind of reassured him that that's not the case, but just for the sake of the public, if you could talk about exactly what this does, just to clear up any misconceptions.
Yeah, yes, Mayor and council, the alleyway ordinance was basically amended to basically clear up the language that we had prior. So the new ordinance and the amendment is to basically be able to provide a clear direction for us to be able to understand exactly what is appropriate for the, for alleyway in terms of just the right-of-way for, for those that are in the public. So essentially, the new ordinance would read, "No person shall use an alleyway within the city as a thoroughfare, either as pedestrian or in a vehicle, except authorized emergency vehicles, property owners, residents, and tenants." So it doesn't disclude those that are actually residents or community members. It would, it would basically exclude those that are, that are coming into the alleyways that, that really do not have a right to be there or that are essentially trespassing within that area.
Sounds good. Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Councilmember Keating, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you very much, Chief and Mayor.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Anyone else from the council, any comments or questions for the chief? Wonderful. Thanks so much, Chief Glover. Appreciate it. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the city council on this item? If so, please get my attention. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Want to reiterate, second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for September 22, 2022. The next item under the section is 8B5, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing abandonment of a portion of an irrigation and utility easement lying west of River Drive and located in the southeast quarter of Section 24 Township 1, North Range 4, East Heela and Salt River Basin, Meridian, Maricopa County, Arizona. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak, to address the council on this item? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Counsel, any further comments or discussion? All right, hearing none, just want to reiterate, second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for September 22, 2022. The last item under the section is 8B6, which is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance abandoning a portion of an existing public utility easement on property located near Larkspur Lane and Palm Drive. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the city council on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, any comments or discussion? Hearing none, the second and final public hearing on this item is scheduled for September 22, 2022. Next up, we have items for second public hearing and final adoption. These items were read and introduced back on August 18, 2022, and votes on these items will be taken this evening. First item under the section is 8C1, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance for an amended planned area development overlay and a development plan review for a new five-story multifamily development consisting of 591 dwelling units on 16.8 acres for Emerald Multifamily located at 1607 West Commerce Drive. The applicant is Barry Riddell LLC. I see Ms. Riddell coming to the podium here. Would you like to make a presentation?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, Wendy Riddell with the law firm Barry Riddell, 6750 East Camelback. Just briefly, to give a presentation here, it's my pleasure to be here this evening on behalf of Davis. There we go. Just as a reminder, this is part of the Emerald Center. This is an approximately 16.8 acre site at the northwest corner of Priest Drive and Warner Drive. It's Lot 5 of the larger Emerald Center. We are here this evening seeking an amendment to the PAD to allow there to be multifamily, allowing the density as well as a major development plan review. So again, to put it in context, the proposed multifamily is located on the northern portion of Lot 5. The southern portion of Lot 5 will remain as future commercial development. And then here is a little bit of better graphic, again, showing how the site lays out, showing the connectivity. We are looking at two wrap apartment buildings with a total of 591 units. There is a proposed building height of 80 feet, and it does have a full amenity package. Gives you an idea. Again, we are looking at market rate of the type of amenities that we are talking about. You'll note that there is a new addition at the bottom of this list of a dog run for each of the individual buildings. I know that was raised at the last council meeting, and I wanted to show here that that was something that we took to heart and have been able to include. One of the other mentions was about the building color, the concern that that white was really very, very bright, so we took a look at that as well, and it'll be a more muted white and to address that concern that the Vice Mayor, or pardon me, Councilmember Keating had at the time. Gives you another picture. And yet, one more. So with that, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember, I'm, we respectfully request approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Riddell. Really appreciate it. Once again, appreciate the abbreviated presentation, and she gave a much more full one during the first public hearing, so just wanted to note that for those watching at home. Councilmember Garland?
Oh, I just want to say that I, I appreciate the fact that you took into consideration what was mentioned at the last meeting and that you have incorporated, not only incorporated it, but brought it to show us. So I just have to say, I really, that's, that's a great way for us to work together to do something great for Tempe, so thank you.
You bet.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Mayor?
Let me, let me go, I've got three folks on the phone. Let me go to Councilmember Keating first, given the fact that I know Ms. Riddell was mentioning his item from the previous meeting, so Councilmember Keating.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. Yes, Wendy, thank you very much. I really appreciate you guys working on that. I do think it looks better, and I think it will be a great addition to that area of the city, and we'll be supporting it tonight. Really appreciate you working.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Keating. Vice Mayor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Wendy, I really, really appreciate you bringing the dog parks into this, into this community, and we've had such a hard time getting dog parks in South Tempe, and this is, this is a perfect example of really looking outside the box and making this happen. The dog parks, one of the reasons I'm so set on dog parks is because people meet their neighbors. And in apartment buildings, sometimes people don't meet their neighbors that well, and the dog parks will really bring a sense of community and a sense of home and also get the dogs exercise along with the owner's exercise. So, it's a win-win on every level, and I just really appreciate you incorporating my concern about dog parks into your design. I also like the trees. I like the look of this project. I think it's, it's very innovative and exactly what, what we need. And I'm happy that South Tempe will at least have area that people that live in that area can, can run their dogs. So, thank you for that so much. I will be approving, I will be supporting this project moving forward tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Adams. Councilmember Hodge.
Okay, so Vice, Vice Mayor just took my glory again. And Vice Mayor, I was the one who asked for the dog parks in there, so I'm gonna go back and say that was, that was one of my things because the mayor himself kept saying, "Why do you keep asking for dog parks?" And everything I did. So, I literally did ask for that in there. So, I'm taking my glory back and saying, "Yeah, I'm excited about the dog parks."
I, I ask every, I ask every time for dog parks. Councilmember Hodge.
I know you do. I'm just messing with you, but it's, it's lovely.
I just am happy that, I'm happy that I have another person on council that's supportive of dog parks.
It's lovely, it's lovely, Wendy. Everything you've done, thank you so much. That area I, I worked in for over 15 years, right down the way at the Sears Center right there. So, I just, I think that's gonna be a great addition to it. So, thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Mayor, yes, Councilmember Navarro.
Yeah, a little hurt here. What about the cats?
All right, sounds good. No, I, I just want to say, you know, I mean, Ms. Riddell, thank you very much. People have already said it that, you know, for working to kind of alleviate some of the concerns the councilmembers raised during the first public hearing. And, you know, I remember when I first talked to you about this project, that area had been vacant for so long that I was beginning to believe that that was actually how it was designed to be, was a vacant patch of land. And you said, "No, this was originally planned to have some kind of development on it." So, I'm glad that we're adding more housing in this community that is desperately needed. One of the things, you know, that the Arizona Department of Housing has talked about is that we're, you know, 270,000 units short of housing when it comes to this entire state. And so, I do believe that all cities need to do their part to make sure we're bringing housing in, both rental and owner-occupied, which this council is doing. So, I really appreciate the fact that this project's gonna add another 591 units to an area that needs it and to our city. And I appreciate you listening to the concern. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor. It's refreshing to have a council that really recognizes and understands that and can cite those numbers off the tip of their tongue. So, thank you.
I had to say that. They took the dog park thing away from me, so I had to say something. Okay, with that said, is there any other comments or questions from council? And actually, before I do that, let me just do really quickly here. Was there anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this item? It is a public hearing. Okay, I will close the public hearing. The motion was made by Councilmember Navarro and seconded by Councilmember Garland. With that, please vote.
Aye.
Aye.
And that item passes seven to zero. Thank you so much, Ms. Riddell. Appreciate it. The next item under the section is 8C2, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance for an amended planned area development overlay and a development plan review for a new 21-story mixed-use development consisting of 352 dwelling units and commercial use on 2.23 acres for Lincoln South Bank located at 1122 East Vista Del Lago Drive. The applicant is Snell &amp; Wilber, LLC. And I see Mr. Nick Wood there in the front row. Would you like to give a presentation or?
I'm good, Mayor.
You're good? Okay. All right, sounds good. Want to also note, well, for people in the audience, either here or watching at home, that Mr. Wood did give a pretty extensive presentation as well during the first public hearing, just for public transparency, and we appreciate that. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address the city council on this item? If so, please get my attention. Okay, seeing none, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Counsel, any comments or discussion?
I have comments.
Oh, I, I was just gonna make a motion to approve.
Okay, so we can get comments later. Let's do, motion by Vice Mayor Adams. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Navarro. Now, any additional comments? Was that Councilmember Hodge?
Yes.
Yes, please go.
Okay, I just want to tell Mr. Woods, I heard what he said about not giving me my dog park in there, but I did go by and walk, and I know there's a lot, it's a beautiful area for dogs to walk along the, along the riverbank. So, thank you. I, I, I'm voting yes.
Thank you, Councilmember Hodge. Anyone else? Any other comments? The one thing I'll say, Mr. Wood, just once again, wanted to note, really appreciate you doubling that ground floor retail space, I know, from 2,000 to 4,000 square feet. You know, one of the things that the council knows that I'm very passionate about, I know Councilmember Chin and I have this conversation practically every day about the need to turn Tempe into really the premier food and beverage destination in the entire valley. And with all the different residents moving in and the different assets we're adding to the city, we want to make sure that all those options reflect the diversity of not only this council, but frankly, our entire community. So, we really appreciate you adding that additional retail space because that can help to land a great food and beverage concept or perhaps even a couple, which would also continue to activate an incredible asset which we have, which is the Tempe Town Lake that people will be able to utilize whether they're walking their dog or just enjoying some recreation, or now, you know, potentially in the future having a nice lunch or dinner and just sort of looking out onto the, onto the water and the skyline. So, just really appreciate you listening to the DRC's recommendations and doubling that retail space. So, thank you. With that said, I'll call the question here. Please vote.
Aye.
Councilmember Hodge?
Aye.
All right, and that item passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is 8C3, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a code text amendment to the zoning and development code consisting of clarifications, modifications, and additions within the zoning and development code, amending various sections within Part 1, Part 3, Part 4, Part 6, and Part 7. The applicant is the city of Tempe. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the city council on this item? I will close the public hearing. Counsel, any comments or discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion on item 8C3? Moved by Councilmember Navarro, seconded by Councilmember Garland. Please vote.
Aye.
Aye.
And that item passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is 8C4, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a code text amendment to the zoning and development code pertaining to subdivisions in Section 6-101 and 6-307. The applicant is the city of Tempe. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, any comments or discussion? Been moved by Councilmember Garland, seconded by Councilmember Chin. Please vote.
Aye.
And that item passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is 8C5, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a code text amendment to the Tempe City Code by repealing Chapter 30 subdivisions of the Tempe City Code and replacing it with the new Chapter 30 subdivisions. The applicant is the city of Tempe. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this item? I'll close the public hearing then. Counsel, any comments or discussion?
So move.
Been moved by Councilmember Garland and seconded by Councilmember Hodge. Please vote.
Aye.
Aye.
And that item passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is 8C6, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the abandonment of a portion of a waterline easement located in the development south of Green Tree Drive, east of Interstate 10. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, any comments or discussion? Been moved by Councilmember Garland, seconded by Councilmember Chin. Please vote.
Aye.
Aye.
And that item passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is 8C7, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the abandonment of a portion of a waterline easement located in the development north of Curry Road and east of College Avenue. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, any comments or discussion? Moved by Councilmember Garland, seconded by Councilmember Chin. Please vote.
Aye.
Aye.
And that item passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is 8C8, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the abandonment of a waterline easement located in the development west of Scottsdale Road and south of SR 202. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the city council on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, any comments or discussion? It's been moved by Councilmember Chin and I think seconded by Councilmember Hodge. Please vote.
Aye.
And that item passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is 8C9, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the abandonment of a waterline easement located in the development south of Don Carlos Avenue and west of Smith Road. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, any comments or discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion on item 8C9. Said, moved by Councilmember Chin, seconded by Councilmember Garland. Please vote.
Aye.
And that, Vice Mayor Adams?
Aye.
And that item passes seven to zero. The next item under the section is 8C10, which is to hold the second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the granting of an irrigation easement to Salt River Project Agricultural Improvement and Power District over certain city-owned land located on the north side of Apache Boulevard between Smith Road and River Drive and authorizing the mayor or his designated to execute an easement agreement and related documents. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the council on this item? I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, any comments or discussion?
So move.
Moved by Councilmember Hodge. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilmember Navarro. Please vote.
Aye.
Aye.
And that item passes seven to zero. And that ends that. Next up, we have item number nine, current events, council announcements, and future agenda items. I'll call upon the councilmembers for their comments in alphabetical order, which means I'm starting with Vice Mayor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that. And I'm just going to my announcements. Fixing my camera here. As most of you already know, about a week and a half ago, I was bucked off my horse. As most of you already know, I suffered six broken ribs and a punctured lung and a concussion. This has been the most painful injury I have ever suffered. What many of you don't know is that I was incredibly lucky. I was wearing a helmet and truly believe that saved my life. I don't remember the accident because I suffered from a concussion, but what I've been told by my friends who were in the arena with me, I bounced several times after being bucked off my horse with my head. That means my head bounced also several times on the hard arena floor. Without a helmet, I can only imagine the damage that would be done, would have been done to my head. So, if some good can come out of all this, I sincerely hope that more horse lovers and bike lovers will wear helmets and look at my experience and the decision to start wearing a helmet when they ride a horse or ride a bike. Heads don't bounce, so wear a helmet. Protect your head and brain from severe injury. Wear a helmet. Horses are dangerous and so can bicyclists, especially with the way some folks drive around Tempe. So, please wear your helmet. I'd like to thank my fellow councilmembers, Tempe residents, family and friends who've reached out to me, sent me an enormous amount of flowers and wrote so many get well cards. I could not have gotten through the last week and a half with a smile without all your support, thoughtful wishes, and love. So, thank you from the bottom of my heart. That ends my announcements, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Adams, and definitely, I think I could speak for the entire council by saying, "We are really glad you're okay, and we're wearing a helmet." You know, but obviously, we know it's sort of a long road to recovery, but we just want to say, you know, "We're really glad you're doing well and that you're recovering at home and, and still very much able to participate in all of these council meetings, and we miss you, and we look forward to having you back at the council chambers with us whenever you're ready." Anyone else from council with comments? All right, let me next go to Councilmember Chin.
Thank you, Mayor. Last week, Tempe hosted Representative Greg Stanton, the Assistant Secretary of the Army for Civil Works, Michael Connor, at the Kyrene Reclamation Facility. Congressman Stanton's role in the House Committee on Transportation and Infrastructure has been instrumental in designating that facility as a Water Resources Development Act project, which opens the door for future funding to bring that facility back online. I'd like to, on behalf of the city of Tempe residents, mayor and council, I'd like to thank the congressman for his commitment to Arizona in a very crucial time for water resources.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Chin. Really appreciate it.
One last short announcement, but a very important one and timely for many of our families, students who are settling back into any of our local high schools. I want to remind them that you have great resources available through the College Connect program. The College Connect Lab is based at the Tempe Public Library. Additionally, in addition to your high school counseling resources, we have college-connected visors available at each of the high schools. And the fall labs begin soon, and the website on the slide is the best source of information for times and dates. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Next up, Councilmember Garland.
Thank you very much. I want to announce that next Thursday is my next backstage pass. It's gonna be at the Tempe History Museum. It is going to be a lot of fun. You get to go to the back rooms and see some of the really cool things that are not on display. We're gonna have storytellers there. You're gonna learn a lot about the city of Tempe, see some maps and pictures and things like that. It'll be really fun. If you're interested, please RSVP if you can. Right now, are over 50 people that have RSVP'd, so it's gonna be a big event. But it'll be an awful lot of fun, and we want to be able to share that with you. So, that's that event. The next thing I want to mention, I think it's, we have a slide for this? No? Okay. So, Joel and I attended the National League of Cities Summer Leadership Board meeting, and it was an awful lot of fun. We got to meet with our constituency groups. And one of the things I'm really proud of that I wanted to mention is that with Joel sitting as chair of the Crime Prevention Federal Advocacy Group, thank you. With Joel being chair, he was able to vote on a booklet that I took part in writing and with some other National League of Cities people from our Indigenous Municipal Officials Group, and it's called "The Roadmap to Repair." It's a guide to how cities can acknowledge and address the history of harm to Indigenous peoples, rebuild trust, and repair relationships. They're gonna do a big kickoff for this with the National League of Cities. It's gonna happen around Indigenous Peoples' Day, so you'll be hearing a little bit more about that. But it was with the leadership from National League of Cities and the board members that approved this. Joel was one of them that approved not only this roadmap to repair, but also including now the Indigenous Municipal Officials as an official group of the National League of Cities. So, we've been trying to do that for two years, and we are now an official group. So, thank you, Joel.
You're welcome.
Thank you. You're so great.
Thank you so much. All right. Next up, Councilmember Hodge.
Thank you. I, I don't think I have a slide. Do I have a slide up?
For the kickoff fundraiser for Yes for Tempe Union? You sure do.
Okay. Well, I first, I want to say thank you, Mayor, Mayor Woods. I just want to announce that on Tuesday, September 13th, from 6:00 to 9:00, Tempe Union will be doing their first kickoff fundraiser to raise awareness and money for our three initiatives on the board. We would love for you to come out and enjoy. It's at, it's at Four Peaks Tasting Room. It's $25 to get in, and that all goes towards helping get the cause out and the movement for the fundraiser. And also, if you would like to get educated on what the three initiatives are that we're putting on the ballot and any other information, this is a great time to come out. Thank you so much. So, please stop by on Tuesday. And my second piece that I don't have a slide for is, I want to also remind everybody that my Breakfast with Burdetta is on Saturday. And I don't want to say the wrong time. I think it starts at 9 o'clock, 9:00 to 10:30. If I'm wrong, I apologize because I don't have the slide right here with me. And it's at the Tempe Historical Museum, and please join me. There's, I'm like Councilmember Garland. I have a high turnout. I have about 70 people who have RSVP'd, and we would love to have it even more. I want everybody, this is my initial kickoff on it, and I want everybody to come out and meet and greet me. meet and greet me and have a great time and eat some Breakfast with Burdetta. And it's also my birthday month, so we're gonna do my birthday cake and everything at the same time. So enjoy my birthday with me. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Hodge. Next up, Councilmember Keating.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to wish both of my colleagues a full and speedy recovery. Glad you both are doing all right, and looking forward to seeing you in chambers again soon.
Thank you, Councilmember Keating.
Thank you, Councilmember Keating. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Councilmember Keating.
Thank you. Next up, Councilmember Navarro.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. First, I want to thank Councilwoman Garland at the NLC Committee, her efforts in getting Indigenous people in the committee going. It really says a lot about her group and NLC and what they've been doing, but I have to give kudos to her because she really pushed the issue very hard to get this through the committee, and with her efforts, it did pass, and it was, it was just a great cause. On the other end of NLC that we're at in Atlanta, I have to tell you, it was a great meeting, being a chair for the Public Safety Crime Prevention Advocacy Committee. We did a number of things using, or talking about law enforcement, talking about public safety, talking about our first responders, fire, medical teams, and, and just issues that are out there in the community. So it was a great, great opportunity for us to talk with the community, to leverage law enforcement technologies, utilizing different technologies to help law enforcement, to help reduce engagements that lead to lethal outcomes. And I think that we had great presentations on that. We also talked about things to improve our transparency, data collection, how do we gain trust within our community? How do we get our, our community back on board to understand what our police officers, what our fire departments are dealing with, what they're, what they're trying to do to help protect not only the members of the community, but, but themselves, and, and trying to do things in the, in the right and most transparent way. In addition to that, we, we talked about things like mental health and finding solutions to help curtail that. I have to say, what we do in Tempe, when we, when we have these open discussions, is top-notch. Rosa and her team and, and the data collection, our Hope Team, our CARE7, the partnership with Fire and PD utilizing those resources, Fire or PD's opioid program, working with ASU, having people that fall off or, or get into a position where they take, have an overdose, the follow-up at the hospital with the counselor to make sure those, the, the people that, that went through that process are getting the right help as needed. I mean, these were great examples of what we're discussing with our groups, and they're great, it was great information sharing with, with our partners across the nation, as other departments are struggling with various things of, of training and what news out there. Hearing our discussion and being able to present what we're offering was great. Mesa had a, you know, and I know we're doing it in Tempe and Phoenix, too, but having a mental health counselor at the 911 dispatch, to be able to unload those calls onto her and to get the most appropriate resources out there besides fire and PD to go out there. Those are just examples that we're sharing in terms of communication, how we're trying to better our system. In addition to advocate and also to get support for funding by the federal government to support those initiatives when it comes to training with our police officers and how to reduce, you know, a violent outcome, but maybe a more appropriate outcome. So I have to say, it was tremendous. In addition to that, we had a joint session with Councilman Garland's committee with the Human Development Committee, and talking with the CDC and SAMSA on mental health and, and what is out there and what they're offering and the guidelines that they're providing for us, and the information that they're giving us to utilize, to show our residents, you know, on, on their dashboards, you know, the outcomes of, of mental health and what the communities are going through, and then the opportunities of funding, having the ability to utilize those resources for funding of various resources that we're trying to achieve within our community. So at the end of the day, it was really a long, robust conversation on these issues, and there's so much more that this committee is so involved in, which, to be honest with you, everybody within, throughout the nation is dealing with some real struggles, especially with staffing and trying to find solutions with that. So appreciate the, the information that was shared. I enjoyed chairing this committee, and, and we're gonna be out there in another conference here in November, and should be some good stuff. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Navarro. Appreciate it.